The next application we'll call to here is C-1412, 529, 533 Dow Avenue.
A C.O.S., the Gail, the Harv, the Hales, the Hales, representing the Sieges Property Group of L.A. Similar to the previous application, this is an exciting development for the city. Similarly to the previous application, this is exciting development in the city of Elizabeth. Sieges Property, and I think it may be because the Airbag Company acquired any properties, this is their first venture with the city of Elizabeth. They're taking what's been a vacant building for many years, and they are now looking to have a, again, you'll hear this company, it's from the terminal, a very exciting company moving into the city of Elizabeth. Again, taking over vacant space. Before this award, again, there's no change, this proposal, the way, by way of footprint of the building, the building seems perfectly with this tenant, and is again a great fit for both the property owner and tenant. The reason why we afford this award is because what they're looking to do is an interesting presentation, is to take the outdoor storage portion of their use. They store and transport these aluminum rods that they need to be placed outside with their size and complexity of transportation. We're going to present testimony and show that it don't have any negative impact on the surrounding area. The site is particularly suited to the streets. And again, taking the vacant building and putting it in occupancy, I think is, again, a great thing for the city. So what I'd like to do first is to call Christopher Williams from Sieges Property, would you tell us a little bit about the new property?
Chris Williams, C-H-O-S-W-I-N-L-L-B-I-N-S, 100 Front Street, Concha Heights, Pennsylvania.
This way you say, third by the open statement. Can you tell the board a little bit about your position with Sieges? How long have you been with the company? A little bit about the company?
I've been with Sieges for approximately two and a half years. I am in charge of all real estate operations for the real estate that Sieges owns in the North Metro area, which is near JFK Airport, New Jersey, Pennsylvania. The company was founded in 2005. We own properties in the markets that are just described, as well as in Miami, South Florida. The total amount of properties that we own are about 140 industrial properties, and we're strictly industrial real estate investors. We have 17 properties located throughout Jersey. This property that we recently acquired in June down at Manhattan is the first property that we've purchased in the city of Elizabeth.
And the tenant that you're proposing at this location, how did you locate the tenant, and why do you think it's an excellent fit for this property?
Our primary focus as a real estate investor, industrial real estate investor, is to be in places where you have industrial properties that are great, just for communities, either to ports, airports, highway systems. And that was our primary focus for the initial investment. The tenant that we're coordinating this by, Continental Distribution, would be a great fit for this, in our opinion, this type of property based upon the business that they do from a distribution standpoint, and from the product that they're going to be bringing in from the port, which makes it just a bit closer for them to do the business that they're looking to do in Elizabeth.
Now, just briefly to click the board a little bit, the history of this property. I know that I indicated my office has been vacant for some time.
The building has been vacant for a few years. It was owned by a group that did not have any further use for distributing beverages. There were in there that still own the building. And we had an opportunity to buy the building from them. We hadn't been in touch with them for many years because of our desire to be in the community. And they felt it was one of the best opportunities at the time to sell the property. And subsequent to that, knowing that the building would be available for distribution and for leasing, we unfortunately could see the activity from Continental, who wants to sort their business or expand their business in the future.
And you have not committed to give the letter of our consultants in the department of comments, although which are in favor of this application, any problems applied in terms of the bid?
No issue with the bid.
Thank you. I have other questions for this time.
Mr. There's any questions to this witness?
I'd like to now call upon Robert Forcell from Continental Terms.
Robert Forcell, F-O-R-C-I-L-L-O, 112 Port Jersey Boulevard in Jersey City.
Mr. Forcell, if you could please provide your position with Continental Terms, and then tell the board a little bit about the company.
I am currently Management Director of the company, part of the management team. I've been with the company for 12 years. The company is a third generation family-owned warehousing and distribution company. We have facilities, our corporate headquarters are in Jersey City. We have facilities in Carney, as well as Jersey City, as well as operations in Chesapeake and Southern Virginia, as well as Charleston, Southern Carolina. We currently leave approximately 2.5 million square feet of warehouse. And our core business is the storage of free coffee beans prior to being grossed. So that's our core business, and that's a business that we're going to do, is one of the businesses.
And the reason why we afford this award is, because that's an existing warehouse facility, is the outside of the storage of aluminum rods. If you could tell the board about that part of the business, and why the company stores it would be helpful.
Well, we're currently handling this business at the facility in Carney. And the combination of the building and the yard size of our Carney facility has been adequate for our existing business. But over the last 12 months, the business has grown. So we've researched an ideal business and a deal facility that will have the storage structure to support certain aspects of our business, but as well on a significant outdoor storage area, which is most suitable for the storage of aluminum rods. So the idea is to expand to this avenue facility, where we'll be able to handle the expansion of our business, and I think in a much better environment, and I think one that's conducive to our needs as well as.
So will the general and the core of the products be stored inside and aluminum rods outside?
Absolutely. There is a requirement that both lines, customers want us to keep both products separate. So that will be required.
And I know when we're discussing the preparation, there, as it's unrelated products, and if you explain the difference of what happens with the options, how it comes in and leaves.
All the products that we handle are produced outside of the United States. The aluminum is produced in Brazil, in Dubai, and shipped here for further production into various types of aluminum products, in things from airplanes to household goods. So the aluminum rods are produced in rod forms for shipping purposes. And then upon arrival in the United States, they're shipped to smelters where they are converted, I think in one of a number of products. They're shipped in these lengths for efficiency and shipping, and then are shipped out of planets due to their length. And so that's where they're stored outside, it's really the only option, given the lengths, the openings of the doors would have to be, you know, close to 20 feet, in excess of 20 feet to operate, in terms of the situation.
And also, we are discussing whether these, the move these parts around would be difficult in grade-up in resources.
Yes, correct. They're traditional high levels, but they're just a larger size, and they have the capacity to handle the weight of the vehicle.
And is there any bond associated with storage of this type of material outside?
No, they're simply embedded onto a tropic wood. There's no coating on those aluminum, so there's no coating. If they're being aluminum, they've been untreated, and that's what allows them to be converted into one of probably hundreds of products.
And generally, what are your number of employee hours of operation?
We would expect to have a facility with approximately 17 employees. And our facility is from Monday through Friday, from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m.
And what type of deliveries would you expect to come to and from the site?
Our expectation is that the total activity from an in and out basis, we probably have about 35 vehicles combined, certainly in the property on a daily basis.
Now, from the previous case, again, the parking is in our C-zone, it's based upon the lot area exposed and building size and use. Based upon your controls, you said there's nearly 26, 27 parking spaces that are at the front of the property. Is that more than adequate for your operation?
Yes, certainly so.
And what attracted you to this site in particular? Can you indicate as well the proximity to the sporting area and the configuration of the building and the storage areas?
Yeah, I think it's a combination. We've been looking at the building for a number of years. We just weren't able to come to the arrangement with the previous owners. And the proximity to the port is ideal. The proximity to the highways for the product to move on to a focal destination. And then the combination of both yard space and building space is something that really trays for the property. We have many properties, and this relationship is ideal for us, and that's why we're becoming interested in this property.
From an occupant's standpoint, any problems applied in terms of the conditions? Are there any requirements? Thank you. I have other questions at this time.
Mr. There's any questions to this witness? Do these still condone smoking, or starbings?
A little bit both. I'd like to briefly call upon our site engineers, Andy and Dr. And there's some site improvements that are proposed using this facility, but we want to get the board an overview of the layout.
Daniel Jett, Dr. D.O.U.G.H.E.R.T.Y. Dynamite Engineering Consultants, 1904 Lake Shore, Lake Como, New Jersey.
Mr. Dr. You've heard the testimony of both the witnesses so far. Seating, can you provide the board with an overview of the site planning area?
Site location is 101 Lot 101 C, 535 Dow Avenue. It's located in the MRC Zone on Dow Avenue. We have a couple of exhibits tonight. The first exhibit is simply a color or printout of the same aerial map that's sheet two, three, in the board's package. We can mark that as a one. And just for records purposes, we mounted an identical copy of the site management sheet, three to three. That's also in the board's pack, twice the mission, and we can mark that. The project's site change must be set to be by five papers. And it contains approximately half the site is occupied by the existing warehouse building of that on Air 51 Square. As we stated before, the site is located in the MRC Manufacturing Research and Decorations Zone, on the east side of Dow Avenue. It's bounded to the east by the New Jersey return plate with the city of interchange thirteen and. To the north by similar warehouse industrial uses. Similarly to the west Dow Avenue and beyond warehouse uses. These shop right facilities under construction now and in trucking. And then to the south, also similar warehouse facilities. In fact, if you look at the aerial footage or the exhibit, you'll note that, as is true with most warehouse facilities and industrial uses, although there may be material that's stored inside, the outside of the businesses and sites are used really throughout the storage of trailers, various containers that are utilized in warehouse industry. The same goes for this existing site. Although there's no documented order that or specific storage and outside materials, you'll see there's certainly trailers that are stored outside throughout the yard of the site for purposes of utilization in the warehouse during operations. Under proposed conditions on the site plan, you'll note that from an engineering standpoint, there's not a lot to talk about, really not posing any hard requirements to the site. Access to the site is via two driveways. Primarily ingress access on the southern driveway of Dow Avenue that feeds into a one-way arden aisle off the front due to the build of Dow Avenue. And also feeds along the south face of the building to the rear of the building where the main yard of the building is for loading and loading of tractor trailers. There's also a small driveway along the western side of the building. That's more than alternate driveway for smaller vehicles, not the primary driveway certainly for tractor trailers. Both ingress and ingress for tractor trailers would use that southern driveway. Under proposed conditions, we've identified irregularly shaped area at the eastern corner really close to remote area of the site for storage of materials, specifically the aluminum rods. The rods are packed onto tractor trailers in both containers and on flatbeds, and they are assembled and packed in bundles. At this facility, they're simply transferred from vehicle to vehicle, and there's no use of the rods here in this facility from manufacturing. So simply the bundles are taken off one truck, placed in the yard for storage, and they're put onto another vehicle to be decided or manufactured in the facility somewhere else. So that being said, we just had to identify a generic area on the site for these bundles that be stored and stacked, and that would also allow circulation for other operations, both the delivery of the rods on the site by hand, and also for the coffee deliveries. Primarily the coffee deliveries will occur at the southeast corner of the site, under the cover, although it's not visible on the aerial, because it's covered loading dock. But there's a loading dock underneath the rooftop of the building that's up this corner, and that's visible on the site location.
And from the layout configuration on your site plan, do you see any problem with either vehicle circulation, a way of passenger vehicles or trucks in the storage area?
No, it actually moves itself very well. The corner of the site where the proposed material storage is located is really out of the way of building, vehicle circulation, for vehicle circulation to and from the building for loading and loading of both the coffee, and we just store it in vehicles generally through air. From a passenger vehicle standpoint, it's really excellently laid out, and the passenger vehicles only utilize that front parking area along Dow Avenue. And that traffic's not really interrupted at all with the tractor trailer and the recirculation. As we stated before, the MRC Zone, the ordinance for town requires parking according to the lot area, typical for parking requirements, regardless of the use or the size of the building, et cetera. It's just based upon lot areas. So for the given lot area of our lot, which is 326,980 square feet, we apply a parking rate of one space to 1,400 square feet. And that results in a parking requirement of 234 spaces. Clearly, it is a substantial amount of parking for a warehouse used such as this, where there's 27 spaces that are existing along that Dow Avenue frontage, and they're ready to be used, as you heard from the potential tenant, that's certainly a fact that we produce.
And you've had an opportunity to give the supplemental reports, but I don't think there's actually any comments or requirements.
That's correct, we agree with all of them.
Thank you. I have other questions at this time.
Mr. There's any questions to this witness? Say none. Do you have any further questions?
Yes, I just want to briefly call upon our professional planners who address the outside storage issue. He was previously qualified also. Mr. Cunnion, if you please, address the planning criteria for this application based upon the submissions and testimony heard.
Absolutely, Mr. Chairman. I think at this point, my testimony will be relatively brief. What I'd like to do is put the site scene for itself, and I have to hand out some of the paper and what I sent back to you this evening. The record A2 is going to be another three sheet set of photographs, starting with aerial and several ground for warehouse sites of the Shenans. So they are fresh, as far as the information is available as of now. And as A2 was being, I'll talk about the highlights of what we can show. We're dealing with a situation here where we have a site that's well-suited for what the avenue and the place will do. The avenue has chosen a nice, hot location, equipped, outdoor storage in the area, where this is generally shielded, surrounded by properties by various ability to assess, ornament, vegetation, and housing, and of course, the rest of the backside. So we have no neighbors that have been bearing down eyes on this property that would be impacted visually or functionally by the nature of what the avenue is doing. And some of the running through the photographs are Exhibit 1, Exhibit A2. We've got one question. Of course, we've got a large mass of building in front of this seven and eight year site, 150,000 square feet, which will shield any view of this outdoor storage from Dow Avenue. We're looking at material that are probably about 10 feet or so behind the stack, which is less than a building, so we're building itself a barrier for most of us. And then on the backside, the city open space in the middle of vegetation that's joined this area, which has, by the way, historically used for outside storage purposes as well. Past, we had the Arizona Tea Company, storage trailer of the property. So in effect, we've moved from some tea storages to coffee storages. Very similar use historically at this particular location. We're surrounded by industrial buildings, limited windows, again, everything is familiar in the area, any question? The balance of photographs for that finding, frames one and two, are panoramic, looking at the side of the building, heading to the north, we see a massive building, we see the open space where this storage area of a car or distance of vegetation around the back of property. Similar to frames three and four, this is an open area well-suited for this relatively small storage type of use. Frames five, six, seven, they show us the surrounding uses and generally our business nature of what surrounds us and the impact that this usually have on surroundings. We use the turnpike. Here is the view that you see if you were looking at the site, you're actually looking back over your shoulder as you drive. So this is not a head-up view, it's when this is traveling along the turnpike. This uses in some sort of code for, we show the vegetation, we show the those buildings that surround the property. So I think those photographs go towards the visual impact that's associated with this and they use functional impacts, or the general way of use, in terms of health and safety. Some of it presents some life safety issues. We're dealing with a use that's not dangerous, we're dealing with this new site, we're dealing with clean use, storage products don't generate any pollution or light. And looking at the impact of welfare, we're dealing with a use that's not noisy, it's operating into a competitive business analysis. So the layout, it's under the so-called useless criteria, we can definitely be concerned with that pressure of that. So I believe this is pretty clear that the negative criteria of the situation is satisfied here. On the positive side, we have a site that's certainly typically suitable to use by commercial, it's historic use. We're promoting it on welfare, as a job generator, as a supporting use for the board, or as official use of land, the most desired provision required by the population to use. In fact, it's not a site that we are advancing goals of your master plan. We support the board as a regional economic engine. We are advancing master plan goal of keeping industrial uses away from residential areas, not so much away from residential use. And also concentrating on other scenarios that are well served by transportation, serving on a greater transportation model like here. So for the laws of reasons, I think all the problems of the session are the investment and use barriers are met. The investment parking barriers are also met on a seat balancing, and the maintenance data application and whole outweighed assets. Serving the parking supply under the use of actual demand. Twenty-seven main spaces, seventeen employees, this is surplus customers, this is low customer type of use. So without regard for the national investment, both barriers is also met. All sets, without a patient, it means all statutory investment, if I understand correctly.
Thank you. No further questions at this, Mr. Cunnion, at this time.
Any questions or reservations to this witness? Are there any members of the public who should speak for or against this investigation? Can you step forward? See, none of them have a word in session. Mr. Cunnion?
Mr. Chairman, like we say, photos worth a thousand words. Well, it's very obvious in this photo here. I mean, you can store only one document, I can jeopardize or bother any name of any sort. I feel that's no greater than, I think, the application that we're going to set the qualification.
Commissioner O'Fallon? Commissioner Dixon? Commissioner Cannon? Commissioner Reed?
I approve that petition, it is possible to change. I approve that petition to generate jobs, and I would say it would be being used in a band, and eventually come one down.
Commissioner Galdest?
I too agree, because I think a fantastic application for the city would be.
I too agree with this, because I think a fantastic application, considering all this, General Scott. Apparently, the lower request of the property. From that side, I have a motion.
Motion approved.
Motion by Commissioner Calhoun, second. Second by Commissioner Cannon. Roll call on this one.
Commissioner McCallum? Commissioner Eadie, for everything said. Commissioner McCallum? Commissioner, Commissioner Calhoun? Commissioner McDellan?
Congratulations on the vote of the Senate motion.
Thank you very much for your time, Mr. Eadie, appreciate it.